So I'm going to go ahead on and call the regular meeting via teleconference of the Mayor Board of Alderman to order. The time is eleven oh five AM. I ask at this time that we pause for a few moments of silent prayer. Let us pause for prayer, please. Thank you, and amen. At this time, I ask if Alderman Dan Dillard, if you would lead us in a pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and for the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and I always forget the last part.
With liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Alderman Dillard. At this time, will the city clerk perform the roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Alderman Mathis?
Here.
Alderman Frazier?
Here.
Alderwoman Smith?
Here.
Alderwoman Irving?
Here.
Alderman Davis?
Here.
Alderman Dillard?
Here.
Mr. Latham?
I'm here.
Our President, Mayor of County Four.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next order of business is Business of the Month. Business of the Month is Compassus Hospice. Hospice Compassus has been providing hospice care in Natchez and surrounding areas since two thousand and four. Dr. Charles Born serves as the Medical Director for Compassus and assists in providing home and facility-based hospice service to patients. Eighteen colleagues work out of the office at one fifty-one Jefferson Davis Boulevard in Natchez. The Natchez Compassus team is committed to providing excellent hospice care in the areas that they serve and working to improve lives one patient at a time. So at this time, it is my honor to recognize Hospice Compassus and a representative, if she would introduce herself, is on the call and she will also tell you a little bit about their agency. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor Derek Reneal. My name is Jacqueline Johnson. I'm a Director of Clinical Services for Compassus Hospice in Natchez, Mississippi. And as you said earlier, Compassus Hospice services areas in the state of Mississippi and various other sites. And in the area that we serve in Natchez, we serve Jefferson County, Williston County, Franklin County, all the nursing homes and various other sites. We also service, Dr. Born, as you said, is our Medical Director. And we have other attending physicians and various other medical directors that help service our patients at the Compassus site. On behalf of all employees at the Compassus Hospice Natchez, I would like to thank the mayor and the City of Natchez for this marvelous recognition. We want to thank you and thank you for recognizing us and we really appreciate it. And we thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. And on behalf of the Mayor Board of Alderman, citizens of Natchez, the Adams County Board of Supervisors, the citizens of Adams County, on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce and the Natchez Business Civic League, congratulations again as being identified as Business of the Month. And our administrative assistant at City Hall, Mrs. Pam Patterson, has the banner and your certificate for you and she will send it to you. Thank you and God bless you for all that you do.
Thank you all and have a nice day.
Thank you.
Next, we would like to welcome all visitors who are here with us today. Next item on the agenda is unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business before the board at this time?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is Alderwoman Mathis. I'd like to ask-
Yes, Alderwoman Mathis.
Yeah, I'd like to ask the attorney if he has executed that letter to Natchez Railway.
I hadn't sent a letter to Natchez Railway.
In the last meeting, I gave you all some information about the pilings that were on that railway. And Mayor, I think you suggested we would send a, what was your turn, Mayor? We would send a letter to the Natchez Railway.
Yes, are you referring to down there off of Natchez Street?
Yes, sir.
In that area? Yes, I had, yeah, Bob, go ahead.
No, I recall vaguely some discussion of an issue with the railway, but I didn't have any information. I didn't hear anybody ask me to send a letter. I may have just missed it.
I may be confused. I'm not sure who's supposed to send the letter, but the mayor suggested that we would send a letter, you know, in a fast manner about that because children are playing out there and because of that stack of wood on that railway track out there, snakes have built up and people are getting snakes on their porches. So I thought, Mr. Mayor, you said that we would send a letter?
Right. I contacted Public Works about that to go out and take a look to assess that situation so that we can make contact with Natchez Railway in order to abate that situation. Yes, ma'am.
Mayor, yes, sir, you did make contact with us and we did, but this was, of course, that was prior to Alderwoman Mathis's request for the letter. But we did go out about a week prior when you contacted us. We did go out and take a look and we did make contact with the railroad and let them know of the concerns that we had. So we did do that prior to the last board meeting.
Okay.
But there was supposed to be a letter sent and I just wanted a copy of it to make sure that they had received this letter as a follow-up of our concern or the board's concern about the health issue out there.
Yes, ma'am. We will get on top of it immediately.
Thank you. I'd like to get a copy of that letter if I may. That's the first one on the unfinished business. And the second one on the unfinished business, Mr. Mayor, if I may, I'm going to make a motion at this point for discussion that we, in lieu of Public Works discussion last meeting concerning their replacement status and the fact that they don't have enough people out there to work. I've talked with Mr. Dollar and several other people. And I'm going to move that we go on and initiate the hiring of ten student workers up to the tune of thirty thousand dollars. And that would replace all of their, they're not able to have prison labor. So we have Public Works people who normally would have prison labor to water plants and do edges and trim grass and do some of those other things that don't require a specialty in an area out there at Public Works. These students could do that during the summer. And I think I'd ask him, how would it work out? Would it be less than hiring like two people right now until we can all get the budget straight? But I'm going to move that we go on and initiate the summer work program and get those students hired specifically for the Public Works Department.
Okay.
I second the motion.
Okay, it's been moved by Alderwoman Mathis and seconded by Alderwoman Irving to hire ten student workers. And let me make sure I understand your motion, Ms. Mathis. And all of these workers work for Public Works only? Is that the intent of your motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, because of the emergency that they're having because of the pandemic. Another year, hopefully, we'll spread it back out, but this particular time, they need the help more than any other department, I believe.
Okay. Is there unreadiness on the motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Smith?
I would like to hear the department head speak on this and because just to, are they back working a hundred percent? I know they've been on fifty percent for a while, but I think they are back on that. I just want to hear back from him that they're doing that and he feels like this is the right move rather than hire somebody.
Yes. Well, in the discussion as far as being back to a hundred percent, we've been back to a hundred percent now for, oh, what, over the month, I guess a month or so, we've been to a hundred percent. But as I've stated in the last meeting, we are, we are four to five full-time employees down at this time. And so we were, of course, in addition to anywhere from eight to twelve inmates on a daily basis, we're down. So with that, we were looking at, trying to think about ways where we could. And one of the initial things that came up, well, we don't have the money right now to, of course, to try to put our budgeted people, which is the four to five positions, back on our payroll right now. Maybe what could we do? And so one of the thoughts was, well, in replacement of, to help out with our grass cutting, which is, our inmates perform our weed eating, they perform our spraying, they perform watering of flowers, they perform litter pickup. There's a number of tasks that they perform that we are not able to, we're not able to perform right now just because we don't have the personnel. So it was, well, if there was thirty thousand, how far would that make us with an employee? Well, that would certainly probably get us one full-time employee. But through the next few months, could we utilize that money to put in towards this program to get ten workers to help us get through the summer while we don't have the inmates at this time? And I think that would be very beneficial to what we need.
One last question, Mr. Mayor. Is there any word on when inmate labor will resume?
No, we've done some checking, but they have not given us any definite answer. You know, kind of just based on some of the conversations, maybe towards the fall. Again, we have no definite answer, but probably sometime closer to then, I would think, before they would let them back out. We don't have a definite answer on that in some of the conversations.
Okay, is there any other?
Yes, I would like to make a comment. Felicia Irving?
Go ahead, Ms. Irving.
Okay. Good morning, everyone. I would like to say that adjudicated property, he didn't mention it, but we have a lot of overgrowth with adjudicated property and it's throughout our entire ward. And so Public Works is not able to attend to those properties either. So it was just an add-on to what Mr. Dollar stated.
Okay.
Thank you. That's all that I have.
Further unreadness on the motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Ms. Frazier?
Yeah, I'm in complete agreement with the rest of Alderman. Oh, yeah, my ward, the grass, I don't know about the rest of them, but the grass just took over everything and trashed all of Madison Street. So I am truly in favor that we really need these people to get on this right sort of spot. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Yes, sir. Any other unreadness? Hearing none. Alderwoman Mathis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Frazier?
Aye.
Alderwoman Smith?
Aye.
Alderwoman Irving?
Aye.
Alderman Davis?
Aye.
And Alderman Dillard?
Aye.
Okay, Madam Clerk, it's unanimous. All right. Any other unfinished business? Hearing none. Any county business? No county business. Moving on to department directors' reports. Mr. Johnston, Community Development?
Morning, Mayor and Board. I provided my report in your packet this past Friday and Dustin has one to view on the screen as well. North Natchez Drainage, the agreement between W. Blaine &amp; Sons and the City of Natchez to discontinue work on this drainage project expires on Sunday, June fourteenth. If it is the board's desire, staff is requesting a motion to give the contractor permission to resume work on Monday, June fifteenth, two thousand twenty. I would like to add a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
You've heard the request, Ms. Mathis?
Yes, I'm going to move that W. Blaine &amp; Sons resume work on Monday, June fifteen, two thousand twenty, on the five ninety-two project.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Mathis, seconded by Ms. Frazier. Unreadness on the motion? Hearing none. Alderwoman Mathis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Frazier, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderwoman Smith, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderwoman Irving, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Davis, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Alderman Dillard, how do you vote?
Aye.
All right, it's unanimous. Approved, Madam Clerk. Mr. Johnston?
Natchez Aquatic Center Improvement. Earlier this month, the Department of Wildlife, Fisheries and Parks, in conjunction with the National Park Service, approved the city's request to fund the additional improvements at the Natchez Aquatic Center, including the automatic chlorinator, leachers, cubbies and lockers. An amendment to the agreement will be forthcoming to the city. In the meantime, staff is requesting permission to advertise for a general contractor and to seek quote bids for two activities as well, including the purchase and install of the solar cover and the purchase and install of the pool heating system.
You've heard the request. What's the pleasure of the board?
I'll move, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a second?
Checking.
Moved by Ms. Mathis, seconded by Ms. Frazier. Unreadness on the motion? Hearing none. Alderwoman Mathis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Frazier, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderwoman Smith, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderwoman Irving, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Davis, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Alderman Dillard, how do you vote?
Aye.
It's unanimous, Madam Clerk. Mr. Johnston?
Citywide Energy Efficiency Improvement, Schneider Electric. The following acceptances of work completed by Schneider Electric and sustainability services need to be accepted by the Mayor and Board of Alderman. Approval of No Cost Amendment Number One for additional exterior lighting, substantial completion for mechanical, substantial completion for the exterior lighting retrofit, substantial completion for the Natchez Council chambers, roof and the final acceptance as entire scope of work. Is any additional discussion required? Sorry.
All right. You've heard the, what's your request, James?
No, I mean, if there was any additional discussion, I could try and answer them. The No Cost Amendment Number One is explained in writing beneath. This was something that was not included in the initial scope of work. Did not cost the city any money through a partnership with the city and Public Works. Schneider provided the materials. Justin and Public Works provided the labor to do the install of the additional twenty-eight, two hundred and fifty watt Cobra Head lamps.
Okay, yes, Ms. Smith?
I would make the motion for approval of the No Cost Amendment Number One for additional exterior lighting.
Okay, is there a second?
Thank you.
Moved by Alderwoman Smith, seconded by Alderwoman Irving. Unreadness on the motion? Hearing none. Alderwoman Mathis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Frazier, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderwoman Smith, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderwoman Irving, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Davis, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Alderman Dillard, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Dillard, how do you vote?
Aye.
It's unanimous, Madam Clerk. James?
Mr. Mayor, I would like, I guess, a motion either collectively or individually on the other four items as well.
Mr. Mayor, I make that motion collectively on the next four items.
Ms. Smith offered the motion. Is there a second?
I'll move.
Aye.
Seconded by Alderman Davis. Unreadness on the motion? Hearing none. Yes, Mr. Dillard?
A question to Mr. Johnston is that as we sign off on this work as being accepted, is there anyone on the city's behalf that has done some inspections to concur that the work is acceptable in place and as proposed?
Yes, sir. Both Mr. Rutter and Mr. Dollar worked hand in hand with Schneider. And if you recall, they are also required to review every pay estimate received and to sign on every pay estimate. So yes, sir, the work has been inspected by Mr. Dollar and Mr. Rutter. And so, yes, sir, to answer your question.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other unreadness? Hearing none. Alderwoman Mathis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Frazier, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderwoman Smith, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderwoman Irving, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Davis, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Alderman Dillard, how do you vote?
Aye.
It's unanimous, Madam Clerk. Proceed. James?
Same project. In addition, Home Bank, the institution that financed the lease purchase of these energy efficiency improvements, is requesting the form of acceptance certificate be approved and signed by the mayor, signifying the project is one hundred percent complete, that all warranties and materials have been received and delivered and that the work performed has been duly inspected by city representatives in a good working order.
So moved.
You've heard, is there a second?
Check.
Moved by Alderwoman Smith, seconded by Alderman Davis. Unreadness on the motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Mr. Dillard.
On the warranties and certificates of those materials, is Mr. Johnston in receipt of those and do you have those in hand?
We have them electronically via box dot com. We will be receiving, both myself, Mr. Dollar and Mr. Rutter will be receiving them on a jump drive as well.
Well, I mean, typically in a paper world, you would want three sets of all documents so that years from now, that when there may be a question about a warranty or materials or installation, you would have a reference. But those are important documents that have to be-
Yep, yes, sir. That's why we did request them also on jump drives. When the jump drives do arrive, they'll be printed and given to Mr. Rutter initially and Mr. Dollar because we'll also be able to print his as well. So we'll have a print and electronic. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Further unreadness? Hearing none. Alderwoman Mathis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Frazier, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderwoman Smith, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderwoman Irving, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Davis, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Alderman Dillard, how do you vote?
Aye.
Unanimous, Madam Clerk. James, next item?
Targeted Brantville Assessment U.S. Environmental Protection Agency. The City of Natchez has received a debriefing from EPA Region Four regarding our two thousand twenty Brantville Assessment grant application that was submitted in December two thousand nineteen. The application scored a one forty-six out of one fifty, falling only one point short of success. As mentioned in brief by Trey Hess, PBM consultant, a couple of board meetings back, to strengthen the city's resubmitment this fall, EPA has recommended that the city take advantage of EPA's targeted Brantville Assessment or TBA program. At no cost to the city, it has been recommended that EPA contractor conduct the TBA on behalf of the city. The service would determine how much more investigation is needed and establish cleanup options and cost estimates for the former Titan. Staff is requesting a motion to complete and submit the EPA TBA application to determine cleanup options and cost estimates for the Titan facility. In addition, if you have any specific questions, Trey Hess with PBM is on the call as well.
I'll move.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Mathis, seconded by Alderman Davis. Unreadness on the motion?
Oh, gosh.
Hearing none. Alderwoman Mathis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Frazier, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderwoman Irving, how do you vote?
Aye.
I'm sorry. Alderwoman Smith, how do you vote?
Aye.
I went out of order there. Alderwoman Irving, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Davis, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Alderman Dillard, how do you vote?
Aye.
It's unanimous, Madam Clerk. James?
Citywide Water Improvement Project funded by the city CDBG and the SRF. Staff is requesting a motion to approve payment for the following invoices from our consulting engineering contractor, Greenbrier Invoice Number Five, the amount one ninety-six, two eighty-three and thirty cents. W.G.K. invoice number five, double oh five eight, fourteen thousand seven hundred. Grand total, two hundred and ten thousand nine eighty-three.
You've heard the request. Alderwoman Smith offered the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderwoman Irving. Unreadness on the motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Dillard?
I was reading in the paragraph at the bottom of the page that the city's portion of the invoice is eighty thousand one hundred and thirty-eight dollars. I didn't know, is that a match?
No, sir, that is the portion being paid by the block grant, whereas Water Works will pay the balance with the SRF.
Okay, so the eighty thousand is being paid by a block grant, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Thank you.
Further unreadness? Hearing none. Alderwoman Mathis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Frazier, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderwoman Smith, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderwoman Irving, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Davis, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Alderman Dillard, how do you vote?
Aye.
It's unanimous, Madam Clerk. James?
Staff is requesting a motion to prepare and submit the necessary reimbursement documents to MDA for these requested funds and to authorize the city clerk, when the reimbursement is received, to issue a check in the same amount, eighty thousand one thirty-eight and eighty-nine cents to Natchez Water Works so the contractor may be paid.
You've heard the request. What's the pleasure?
So moved.
Moved by Alderwoman Smith, seconded by Alderwoman Irving. Unreadness on the motion? Hearing none. Alderwoman Mathis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Frazier, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderwoman Smith, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderwoman Irving, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Davis, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Alderman Dillard, how do you vote?
Aye.
Unanimous, Madam Clerk. James?
Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Next, Chief Armstrong, Natchez Police Department.
I have a, one request has to do with efforts to save the city some monies. We have three vehicles that's been involved in a motor vehicle crash. The cost to fix those vehicles would probably be in excess of ten to twelve thousand dollars if we put them in the shop and utilize all new parts. There's three vehicles that's on the list to be sold through an auction. Those three vehicles would probably net the city maybe fifteen hundred dollars, no more than two thousand. You don't get very much for used vehicles, in particular those that's been wrecked. However, I'm requesting these three vehicles to be removed from the list to be sold at auction, thereby allowing me to use those vehicles to repair the three wrecked vehicles. First vehicle is Unit Two Forty-Six. It's a two-eleven Dodge Charger. Then number two, B three C L one C G X, as in X-ray, B H five seven eight four one. Repeating, it's a Unit Two Forty-Six, twenty-eleven Dodge Charger. The second vehicle, Unit Two Fifty-Five, twenty thirteen Dodge Charger. VIN number two C three C D X A G one D H seven one six three six seven. Repeating, a twenty thirteen Dodge Charger, Unit Two Fifty-Five. The third vehicle, Unit Two Forty-One, two oh nine Chevrolet Impel. VIN number two G one W S five seven M eight nine one two nine five seven four two. Again, requesting that these three vehicles be removed from the list to be sold at auction and utilized in the repair work for three vehicles that's been involved in accidents. and utilized in the repair work for three vehicles that's been involved in accidents. We'll be able to use these used parts at the body shop. And our biggest suspense would now would be the labor and the painting and putting these vehicles back together.
Okay, you've heard the request.
So moved. So moved.
All right. Moved by Alderman Frazier. Is there a second? Second by Alderman Davis. Unreadness on the motion? Hearing none. Alderman Mathis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Frazier, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Smith, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Irving, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Davis, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Alderman Dillard, how do you vote?
Aye.
It's unanimous, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Chief. Next, we have Mr. Justin Dollar.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor and Board. I will be, I'm seeking permission to utilize GovDeals as the auction platform to dispose of the surplus equipment and vehicles that we had, that had been approved in the past board meeting. With that, my recommendation would be to use option B four, which is a option whether zero percent to the seller and twelve and a half percent to the buyer. And I've been speaking with Bob the last few days and reviewing this contract.
Okay, you've heard the request. What's the pleasure?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second. Second.
All right, it's been moved by Alderman Irving and second by Alderman Frazier. Unreadness on the motion? Hearing none. Alderman Mathis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Frazier, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Smith, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Irving, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Davis, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Alderman Dillard, how do you vote?
Aye.
It's unanimous, Madam Clerk. Justin?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. And I'll send the document down for your signature. The other thing I have is dealing with similar in nature to what Chief Armstrong had just mentioned. When we were discussing and surplusing these vehicles, I received a request from Mr. Greg Brookings at the golf course and also Ms. Fay Minor with the Recreation Department. And both had came to me and asked if we have any vehicles that are would be willing to, instead of surplus in two of our vehicles, but, you know, allow them to give the two of the vehicles to them, one to each of those individuals, to be utilized for, you know, for city functions. I certainly don't have a problem with that, but I wanted to make sure the board was okay with that. And if that's the case, then I will allow them to pick out the two best vehicles that we have going to auction, and therefore we can remove those from the auction.
Okay, you've heard the request. What's the pleasure?
So moved.
Okay. Is that you, Alderman Mathis?
Irving.
Oh, was it Irving? All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Second.
Second by Alderman Mathis. Any unreadness on the motion? Hearing none. Alderman Mathis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Frazier, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Smith, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Irving, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Davis, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Alderman Dillard, how do you vote?
Aye.
It's unanimous, Madam Clerk. Justin?
That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Any other department directors? Hearing none. We'll move on to city official reports. I will get started with you, Alderman Frazier, since you have a request on the agenda.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I have a request that we have an abatement on some property on twelve oh eight Daisy Street. I don't know if, Ms. Smith, are you online? Ms. Anita Smith? Anyway, Mr. Mayor, I was contacted by Mr. Glenn Wallace in reference to twelve oh eight Daisy Street. This gentleman wanted to purchase this property, but he wanted to purchase, but he don't want the city to take the abatement off. I think it's about twenty seven hundred thousand. And I feel that if possible, we can drop this abatement to get this city, drop this property back on the city tax roll. And he's going to purchase sooner or later, but it's next door to his mother. He gonna tear the house down and everything. So I'm requesting that the board that we vote to drop this abatement.
Okay, when you say abatement, what are you referring to, Ms. Frazier?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. I couldn't hear you. You're breaking up.
Yeah, I said you were referring to an abatement. What specifically are you referring to?
It's a tax. If I'm not mistaken, it's a tax abatement. Like this gentleman, all he can is that, yes. I think the city put a tax abatement on the lien on this property.
Tax. Okay, I don't know exactly what you're referring to in respect to an abatement that has been placed on the property.
Yes, you have a lien, a tax lien on the property.
Okay, so basically there's actually been charges for grass cutting, I guess, that have been placed on the tax rolls on a particular piece of property. And requesting the city abate those that lien. Okay.
That's correct.
All right. So, city attorney, does the board have possessed that authority? Does it has that authority?
No, sir. I've done the research on that issue before, and unless it's technically issued, that it wasn't properly assessed at the time, and the lien was put on there improperly, the city can't abate the charges that have been incurred and collect that on property.
Okay, so go ahead, Ms. Frazier.
I'm trying to make I get that turn and say it was kind of like breaking up. What are you saying?
I was saying that the city doesn't have the authority, basically, to waive collection of those funds that are placed as a lien against that property. What the Attorney General's opinion state, once you make that assessment, once you do the work, make that assessment, those funds are due to the city, and the city just can't say, we don't want them now. It would be technically, it would be a donation to someone. I don't know who it might be, but that would be the theory behind the fact that the city just can't say, we're not gonna, we're not gonna collect on that lien.
Okay, so, in other words, so we can, the city can donate that property to the state?
No, no. No, there's a city on that property?
Uh, to be sure, I really, to be honest, I really don't know who owns that property.
No, I don't think, I don't think the city owns the property.
He's been, Mr. Wallace, excuse me, Mr. Wallace, whoever owns the property. I think he's gonna buy it, but he, but it's, I have a lien, so what, I have to go back to Mr. Wallace and talk to him, what I need to tell him.
I would just have to get some more information on the situation and try to determine what, if anything, can be done. But if some third party owns the property located at twelve oh eight Daisy Street, and some other party is buying it, and they want this lien, you know, abated by the city, it just, the city just can't do that. There's just no authority for the city to abate the lien or the money owed for the lien.
Okay, okay, well, I'll get back with Mr. Wallace and get more detail and make a
Okay, if the facts are different, let me know.
I'll do that.
Okay, Ms. Frazier, anything else?
I have no report at this time, Mr. Mayor. The only thing I, the only thing I can say is for everybody to
Okay. Alderman Mathis?
No report, Mr. Mayor. Mine was taken care of in unfinished business. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Alderman Smith?
No report, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Alderman Irving?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'd just briefly say, I just want to remind community members to continue wearing face covering due to COVID-19, and that this pandemic is still with us. And that ends my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Irving. Alderman Davis?
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Alderman, I'm sorry, Alderman Dillard?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Really, in the form of a question, is that normally on the first meeting of each month, the governing authorities receive a budget status report. And I realize we've been under some trying conditions, but it's imperative that we receive those budget reports. They don't have to be, and none of them are ever perfect by any means, but they are a snapshot of where we are at this time in the fiscal year. So I would make a strong suggestion to the city clerk that as soon as possible, all the aldermen receive a budget status report, which should be for the preceding month.
Yes, sir, Mayor. They have been printing it. We haven't delivered today. It was printed on Friday.
Thank you. The second thing is that I was looking for the minutes where the city had voted on and approved the freezing of, you know, hirings and travel and all those stuff. And I've yet to find that in the minutes. I would request that all the aldermen receive those minutes, particularly those referring to the city's position on freezes, on hiring and travel. There's a longer list of it, and it should be in those minutes. Other than that, Mr. Mayor, no additional information on my report.
Thank you, Mr. Dillard.
Mr. Mayor.
I guess, Ms. Frazier?
Just one minute. Alderman Dillard, you say that we voted on freezes, but hiring and travel?
Well, it's much more than that. We had a motion where we froze all hirings, new hirings, replacement hirings, partial hirings, and seasonal hirings, except for in the position of the police. We put a freeze on all travel for training and otherwise. We put a freeze on all miscellaneous expenditures, contingency expenditures. And we put a freeze, subject to the approval of the board, for any expenditures out of professional services, and I believe contract services. But I'm looking for those minutes, as you know, and all of us know, is that until it has made its way into the minutes, it's kind of precarious.
Yeah, I could be wrong. I don't think I was asleep, but I don't think we voted on all that.
I beg to differ. You may have been asleep, but we did vote on that.
I may have, I may have. I may have, but I don't, I don't remember all those travels and none of that. I don't remember that. Thanks.
Okay.
Mayor.
All right. Anything else? Yes.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Mathis?
Yeah, and along with what Mr. Dillard requested with the updated minutes, I think they would have been not the last ones that we got. I would like to see a copy of the last ones with the changes that we asked to be placed in them, please, before they go into the minute book.
Okay, will do. All right. That's all you have, Mr. Dillard?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor, I want to say, I would like to make a comment on that as well.
Go ahead, Ms. Irving.
Okay, I do recall the conversation and all about the travel, and it was when the small budget committee group met, and they came up with this idea. But my question is, I want to ask, today is June ninth, and they said that you were probably gonna be receiving state taxes at that time. Has that been received as of yet? Taxes from the state.
Are you talking about the sales taxes that we get back?
Yes, sir, sales taxes.
From the State Tax Commission? The clerk will have to speak to that.
We have not received those, Mayor.
And so I think what he was saying, just moving back to what Alderman Frazier stated, we were looking at that. All that was basically hinging on sales tax, especially when it came to the hiring and departments doing that. For example, public works were short of help. And even though I know we voted today to get that, but in the very near future, you know, we would, based on sales tax, be able to go back and look at it, where we are financially within that department, if the money is in his budget, then that would allow us to hire those people that are needed for future use. I just want to add that, because that was actually stated.
Right, and we haven't received those numbers yet. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am. Moving on to the city clerk's report.
Thank you, Mayor. I would ask the board to consider approving the claims docket.
Okay, you've heard the request of the clerk to approve the claims docket. What's the pleasure? Hello? Do I hear a motion for the approval of the move by Alderman Davis? Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a second? Second by Alderman Frazier. Unreadness on the motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have two. Mr. Mayor, I have two questions.
Go ahead, Ms. Mathis.
Page twenty-three, I'm not sure what first insurance is, if the clerk could get that one back to me. And I think it's twenty-seven. It was just two. Page twenty-seven. Yeah, under parks and recreation is zero, so I just wanted to make sure that they had gotten there, whatever they needed in the previous docket. And I'm just wondering on appropriations, why that was a zero?
Okay, Madam Clerk? Madam Clerk?
Yes, so she actually can get it to our will. I will get with the AP clerk and get the information to her.
Okay. Is there father unreadness on the motion? Hearing none. Alderman Mathis, how do you vote?
I'm aye.
Alderman Frazier, how do you vote? Alderman Frazier, how do you vote?
Aye, sir.
Alderman Smith, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Irving, how do you vote?
I won't be voting on the budget, sir.
Okay, on the docket, on the docket. Okay. All right. Alderman Davis, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Alderman Dillard, how do you vote?
Aye.
All right, it passes by a majority, five to one abstention. Madam Clerk, your next request?
Thank you, Mayor. I asked the board to approve my mini docket.
You've heard the request. What's the pleasure?
Second.
Who is that?
Alderman Frazier.
Ms. Frazier? All right, second by Alderman Smith. All right, unreadness on the motion? Hearing none. Alderman Mathis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Frazier, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Smith, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Irving, how do you vote?
Aye.
Okay. Alderman Davis, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Alderman Dillard, how do you vote?
How do you vote?
Aye.
All right, it's passed by a majority with one abstention. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. That concludes my report.
All right, Madam Clerk, also, we need to have a request from the board as relate to the elections. There was no money budget this fiscal year for the elections. What was the estimated cost for the elections, for running the elections for the City of Natchez?
Twenty-five thousand dollars.
Twenty-five thousand dollars. So we've identified money, both in the travel budget of the mayor and the travel budget of, uh, the mayor and board of aldermen, uh, that can be used in order to underwrite the elections, uh, for the city this year, uh, to cover that twenty-five thousand dollars. So, what is the pleasure to board?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Mathis?
I thought also that that was the money that was left in the, the city clerk's department when we talked about this before, that it was in, uh, money was in her budget that could also be utilized for this election. I thought that's what she stated.
Yes, ma'am, we've used that money, we've used it, Ms. Mathis, already, and we had to buy supplies and ballots, and so what I had in my budget has been used, which was like seven thousand dollars.
Oh, the total amount of the election is not twenty-five, it's, it's thirty-two.
That's what I need, I need, well, I need to pay for, I'm using this money to pay my poll workers and, and run the general election, but I've used money out of my budget already that I have to, uh, run the primary, and then I had to get ballots for runoff, so there's nothing left in my budget. So the twenty-five thousand is to pay my poll workers.
Okay, so will the twenty-five thousand dollars run through the balance of the, all, all of the elections through the runoff and the general?
Yes, ma'am.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second. Moved by Alderman Mathis, second by Alderman Davis. Unreadness on the motion. Hearing none. Alderman Mathis, how do you vote? Aldo-, Ald-, Alderman Frazier, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderwoman Smith, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderwoman Irving, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Davis, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Alderman Dillard, how do you vote?
How do you vote? Aye.
It's unanimous, Madam Clerk. All right, uh, next city attorney's report?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, the first, uh, item I have is, uh, it's your request, I have prepared a joint resolution of the mayor and board of aldermen of the city of Natchez and the Adams County Board of Supervisors, designating Flag Day, uh, being June the fourteenth, uh, as a day every year of unity for the city and the county, and copies have been distributed to all board members, and that needs to be approved today in spread of the minutes.
Okay, uh, you've heard the request.
So move.
Is there a second?
So move.
Moved by Alderwoman Irving, second by Alderman Davis. Unreadness on the motion? Hearing none. Alderman Mathis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Frazier, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderwoman Smith, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderwoman Irving, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Davis, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Alderman Dillard, how do you vote?
Aye.
It's unanimous, uh, Madam Clerk. Uh, city attorney?
Uh, the next item I have, actually, um, I was going to get, uh, the board to approve the mayor and city clerk to execute lease on the visitor center for all, uh, for a year, uh, one-year term beginning July one, twenty twenty, and I would like to hold off on that until we, uh, go into executive session to discuss a couple of issues, uh, before the board takes a vote. So, we, uh, put that off to the executive session, and then I also have a, a personnel issue for executive session.
Okay, uh, thank you, city attorney. Uh, I don't have a report. Uh, new business. Uh, we have, uh, a vacancy on, on the C board. Uh, Ms. Labata Hill resigned, uh, from that board. Uh, we, uh, have individuals who are interested in serving on the CPC, uh, Eugenie Cates. We also have, um, Nancy Ruther and Francis Wallace, uh, all interested in serving on the, uh, CPC board. So, what is the, uh, prerogative of the board?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, yes, uh, Ms. Mathis?
Um, I think, uh, my prerogative right now is that, first of all, we advertise that so that we can get all the resumes in. I don't have, I have two, I don't have all of them that you named. And the second part of it is, I'm gonna move that we, uh, allow the new board to initiate this, this process through, uh, having, uh, interviews like we've done in the past, either via, uh, teleconference, or maybe by that time even in person, and let the, uh, new administration handle that appointment, and that's my motion.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved in second, that this, uh, be passed over to the new administration, uh, for the next term, for that appointment. Any unreadness on the motion? Hearing none. Uh, Alderman Mathis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Frazier, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderwoman Smith, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderwoman Irving, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Davis, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Alderman Dillard, how do you vote?
How do you vote? Aye.
It's unanimous. Uh, the appointment will be deferred to the next administration. All right, um.
Mr. Mayor, may I add one, one quick thing?
Go ahead.
I just wanted to add that they're not having any, just add that they're not having any trouble, ma-, uh, getting a quorum. So there's not been, there's not been an issue with meetings not taking place. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, next, um, that is it, unless there's any other new business. If not, uh, motion for closed determination will be in order.
So move.
All right, it's been moved by Alderwoman Smith, second by Alderman Davis. Any unreadness? Hearing none. Alderman Mathis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Frazier, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderwoman Smith, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderwoman Irving, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Davis, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Alderman Dillard, how do you vote?
How do you vote? Aye.
It's unanimous. Uh, that information should have been sent to you, um, for you to sign in on. Thank you.
It's on text, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Okay, let's move on to the, uh, closed determination. Thank you.
Can someone send me the, the telephone number for our executive session, please?
Uh, Alderwoman Irving, it was texted to you just about, uh, in the middle of this meeting, so it should be the next, the latest, the latest text on your phone. Do you need it emailed to you?
Okay, let me look to see. It was something that the ex man, thank you, Justin.
Dustin.
You're welcome.
Okay, just got it, it just got it. Just changed.
Okay, thank you, Alderwoman.
Uh-huh, thank you.
Uh, Dustin, could you email it to me, so I, I'm trying to operate on two different, uh, my phone and my computer, so I can go back and forth.
Do you need it via email?
Email, please.
Okay, no worries.
Thank you. Uh, this is Bob Latham coming back in. Uh, the board has, uh, made an executive session to, to make a determination, and they did make a determination that there, uh, two issues dealing with personnel, um, and actually three issues, and then one dealing with the, uh, potential lease of property. The personnel issues were in the public works and, uh, police department, and then the general, uh.
I have it, Mr. Mayor.
High five, so we'll be back.
All right, at this time, all right, at this time, the, uh, city clerk, will you perform the roll call?
Yes, Mayor. Alderwoman Mathis?
Here.
Alderman Frazier?
Here.
Alderwoman Smith?
Here.
Alderwoman Irving?
Here.
Alderman Davis?
Here.
Alderman Dillard?
Here.
Mr. Latham?
Here.
Our present county mayor.
Thank you, uh, Madam Clerk. Uh, at this time, uh, department director, uh, Mr. Dollar?
Yes, sir, Mayor and board. Um, I recommend the suspension without pay of employee number three zero two eight nine one.
You've heard the request. What's the pleasure to board?
So move.
Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Irving, second by Alderwoman Smith. Unreadness on the motion? Hearing none. Alderman Mathis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Frazier, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderwoman Smith, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderwoman Irving, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Davis, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Alderman Dillard?
Aye.
It's unanimous, Madam Clerk. Uh, Mr. Dollar?
Yes, uh, the next recommendation is, uh, recommend termination for employee number three zero two nine six five.
Heard the request. What's the pleasure to board?
So move.
Moved by Alderman Frazier, second by Alderwoman Smith. Unreadness on the motion? Hearing none. Alderwoman Mathis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Frazier, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderwoman Smith, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderwoman Irving, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Davis, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Alderman Dillard?
Aye.
It's unanimous, Madam Clerk. Um, anything else, uh, Bob?
Uh, no, no, for Mayor, we're, we're gonna take up the matters of the visitor center issues on special call meeting.
All right, anything else before this board, before we adjourn? I would like to request that when we adjourn, uh, this afternoon, that we adjourn in honor of George Floyd, um, who was, uh, killed, as we all know, and has sparked, um, marches, peaceful demonstrations throughout this country and across the world. So I will entertain a motion.
So move.
Second.
Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Irving, second by Alderman Davis. Any unread, I'm sorry, it's not debatable. Uh, Alderman Mathis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Frazier?
Aye.
Alderwoman Smith?
Aye.
Alderwoman Irving?
Aye.
Alderman Davis?
Aye.
And Alderman Dillard?
Aye.
Thank you, God bless you all, please be safe.